This is performed by HDR Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $73,871 and 1 cents. The request has been approved by reviewed and approved by the department.
Okay. The only thing that stood out to me was the number of hours for the construction inspector. Do you feel that's correct? That the number of hours for that individual was like way out of whack compared to all the other professionals listed?
So we do have a full-time onsite inspector.
Okay. So that person's there?
He has an office, a trailer that is completely onsite. So and that will vary sometimes when he's on a vacation.
Okay.
You'll see some of the higher individuals being onsite, but the we our agreement with them was for a full-time onsite inspector.
I got it.
Not somebody who's coming in once a week. And you know, a lot can happen on a $31 million project in a matter of a week when you have multiple trades. So we have do have an onsite full-time rep.
Okay, very good. I move to approve at number 15.
Second. Any more discussion? Call for vote.
Mr. Spitala?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess that's me.
You, Graham.
Item 16. Item 16 is a request for the certification request for the county auditor to the commissioners for the quarterly use of county credit cards pursuant to ORC 301.27 for the year 2025. It's for quarter four for EMA and a revised quarter estimate for Department of Water Resources to include training GL on their for their visas.
I move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Mr. Spitala?
Aye.
Mr. Breckley? Aye.
Yes. Item 17, public comment. Those wishing to make a comment or ask a question on matters of concern, please raise your hand and be called upon. Begin by stating your full name and address. And we'll have up to three minutes to comment or ask a question and are kindly asked to refrain from disorderly or disruptive conduct. Okay. Anybody? In the back.
Skip Claypool, 12448 Ben Brook Drive, Cheshun, Ohio, 44026. I'm rising today to ask a question about a letter that was recently sent from the commissioner's office regarding House Bill 96 that gave the authority to the county commissioners to provide a rollback on property tax. I've got a number of concerns about the letter that I read. First of all, House Bill 96 is a monstrosity and an embarrassment to the state of Ohio, in my opinion. But the concerns I have about the letter is it had one commissioner's name on it, Carolyn Breckley, and the signature line said commissioners. And to the best of my knowledge, under her advice code, you only have commissioners signing when there's been an open meeting discussion about the topic. And and so therefore Carolyn doesn't really represent the commissioners. She represents a commissioner. She's one single commissioner. And so I don't know if there was a public discussion about that or not, but it misrepresents the commissioner board. And so that's a concern. If it was the commissioners that were sending the letter, then three names should be on that letter. So it would be coming from the commissioner. In addition to that, House Bill 96, the rollback of that property tax, I hope you don't decide to do that, is taking money away from and the news media here ought to be paying attention to this, taking money away from agencies without regard to what their financial situation is, what they need to manage, and so on and so forth. So unless there's a due process in place to to take a look at what the actual need of the agency is and how they manage their finances, it would be inappropriate for this office to remove that money. That letter to me appeared to be self-promotion, nothing more. I mean, I'm seeing two commissioners, Jim and Carolyn, who can't get away from a camera out self-promoting themselves. And the reason I bring that up is not a personal attack. It is a concern that as a citizen, they ought to be focusing on the real concerns of this county, the proper management of our financial situation. We just had a prosecutor who made a request for $400,000 to remodel his office. My God, that's a lot of money. I didn't really hear a whole lot of robust discussion about that particular financial issue. We had cost overruns at the courthouse that were unbelievable. We got a courthouse that's just sucking money out of the county. I don't see a lot of concerns and discussions about that. And and we beat up on the poor airport guys here when, by the way, if you make a motion about something that's happening with the federal government, an ODOT grant or Department of Transportation grant, you may discover you really have no ability to avoid or to modify that contract. You will be obligated, once you start down that path and you accept a grant from the government in that regard, that you're going to complete that because the Department of Transportation will require that. So I raised to ask those questions and raise those concerns. And so, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
I appreciate you bringing that up, Skip, because I actually got approached by that with that letter also. And I had no conversation with anybody, nor do I, you know, recall at all that that was ever brought up in a public meeting with that also. And I so I I understand where you're coming from and I appreciate you bringing that up. But I I did see that there was commissioners, plural, at the bottom, and I knew nothing about that letter.
I'll say, so I redlined that letter and when I redlined it back, I I signed it as commissioner. I'm not sure what actually went out to the public because I didn't I didn't send it out. But but my redline, I had the same concern as you, is I'm not representing the board. I'm representing one person. My intent was just as an information gathering so that the commissioners can make an informed decision regarding those those piggyback provisions of House Bill 96. And so that that's all the point of the letter was, was to get some information from entities. Because I do have concerns about the commissioners essentially making a bilateral action then then or a unilateral action and then bilaterally impacts all the other taxing agencies of the county.
And I guess I I would have appreciated a conversation about that, too, especially if it would affect, you know, JFS, Department of Developmental, you know, Disabilities, Mental Health, if there would be any dollars that would be, you know, shed off of those dollars that, you know, their their operations require, you know, and they're 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 trying to be as responsible as they are with their levies to put them out there to cover their costs. And if there would be impact on that, I would have liked to kind of have known that. And I have to agree with what Skip is saying. It's a it's it's just it's a big promotion of politics ahead of principle in many ways, and it's just unfortunate to watch. And what you said about needs and wants is 100%. You know, it should always be about needs, not wants. And it's it's frustrating sometimes to see somebody come back and say, well, this was, you know, this this was more of a want than a need. Well, let's see how long that goes on for, so.
So I don't think I
No, we're not. This is not a back and forth.
I don't think I I don't think I used my three minutes.
We're not talking right now. Your three minutes is up there. You need to sit down.
I don't think I used my three minutes. Do you allow three minutes or no?
Amy, did we have three minutes? Did he have three?
Yes.
Thank you for your comments.
There's no reserving comments, so.
Just consider the open meeting long, by the way.
Thanks, Skip.
So I mean, I did bring up like various tax law provisions that we could implement. There was, I mean, I was just talking and nobody was saying anything. So I went out on my own to try to get some more information about about this piggyback provision and how it would impact. And we obviously, we never voted on it. So that information would have been provided before we would make any vote.
And I think this is on for next week, right?
House Bill 96?
Yeah.
I don't think so.
For us to talk about it? Okay.
I mean, we could, we can put it on if you want, but I I don't.
A little premature.
Yeah, I mean, we're still, I'm still receiving letters from entities regarding how this would impact their their operations. So I I have only received one from township, unfortunately. I haven't really heard much from the townships. I think we've heard from every school district, which isn't unsurprising. When you're talking about cutting funding, I mean, you know, the majority of your property taxes go to school districts. So of course, they have, they had the quickest response. But I, you know, I'm hoping to hear back more from from our townships and how it will impact them, because I know that they have pretty tight budgets, small budgets and tight budgets.
And it's good that the auditor, you know, reached out to all the entities and what would impact them, which is the dollar amount. So it's, I think it's a good process to find out where the hurts are going to be if this goes through, so. Anybody else for public comment?
We have, we have the dog.
We're going to say a situation. We're going to.
Oh, look at those ribs.
We picked her up on Thursday. She was, she has buckshot in her back leg. She's about 40 pounds underweight. We didn't know if she was going to make it or not. Burton Vet is taking care of her now. She's got some fractures in her ribs. She's actually a good dog, but she just needs some loving and all that. But we're going to give her to her and all that. So I thank you for you guys allowing us to do this. Right now, her medical bills are probably at about $1,000. So it's a scenario that, you know, it's priceless, you know? Dogs are are part of the family now, and I just want to show you what sometimes we go into. We have no idea who shot her, or we have no idea who had her as a thing. She's just starting to get used to people again, but we've only had her a few days.
Where was she found?
She was found on 87 in Bundy'sburg. So out in that area, Samaritan found her.
Oh.
Take care of her.
There, girl.
She's been pulled and all that already before. But we're going to, we're going to get her into a home, and this is what what we do. And I thank you guys and all that for helping out. And, you know, if you can post something and get a story on it, I would love to have it. So thank you. I appreciate it.
When will she be available for adoption, Matt?
Right now, tomorrow she'll be checked out by the vet again. She'll have her bandage, re-bandage. We're thinking that, we're hoping to foster to a permanent home.
Yeah.
Or in the next two weeks, we're hoping that she'll have enough weight on her. As you can see, I can push in and I can just touch every single rib that she has. And she's already gained, I think, six pounds since we had her.
Poor baby.
So.
My dog had ribs sticking out like that when I adopted her, and she does not have those anymore, so.
I know. They're usually big and obese and all that. She's, she's a little untrusting still, but, you know, as soon as she starts getting attention and all that, she's very trusting and loves it, you know? But yeah, we picked her up on Thursday.
Does she have a name, Matt?
We call her Jackie.
Jackie.
Actually, the person who adopts her, picked her up, called her Jackie, so we're going to call her Jackie and have it.
All right, so Jackie will be available to adopt soon at the Giaga Dog Shelter?
Yeah. And if anyone has any information on who shot her and why or the owner, we definitely would want to prosecute them for animal neglect.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for everything you do, Matt.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks for bringing it in.
For everything you guys let me do and all that. So thank you.
We hope there's a happy ending for Jackie.
Maybe anesthesia.
She looks pretty sad right now. I know.
She's the first one here right here.
Oh, uh-oh. Uh-oh. Watch out.
Thanks.
And how her car's out back.
Look at her all three-legged hopping down the aisle. Oh, poor baby.
Steve Olwich, I'm resident hand in township, and I'm here today as the chair of the JUG County Board of Mental Health Recovery Services. And it's what I have to say sort of ties in to what Skip and and the board was talking about with the House bill coming up, that losing that those funds for the for my health board will be pretty disastrous for us, over $100,000. We had dreadful impact, and we've made a lot of progress over the last two years, one and a half, two years. You could see at the TLC how we've got the expansion going, and we have, we have some other plans to help really the most vulnerable society in our county. So I was hoping that I could express that, although the paper did say something about me fighting this tooth and nails. I guess that's what this is, that we would like to hope that you would look at the deductions with a scalpel and not a machete. I think there should be a priority of who gets cut and who needs the most. There's also the other venue of what the taxpayers voted for. Our levies have had tremendous support. The one levy had over 75% support. So the community realizes what we need and what's going on in today's society with suicides and all. It's horrible. So we want, we would like you to take that into consideration as this moves down the path. I understand Lake County has already done this, but a broad bro, a broad brush approach would, I don't think, be very good for our county. And with that, thank you.
Yeah, and I would just note that with House Bill 96, my understanding is it's everybody. If you make those piggyback provisions, everybody gets the cut. You don't get to pick and choose if it's just the commissioners or if it's just the schools or whoever. So it's everybody would get that cut. I mean, and I do, I mean, to Mr. Olwich's point, I do have concerns about voters voting for levies and then the commissioners making this, you know, unilateral decision to roll back those those levies that were voted on by. And frankly, I think there could be legal implications for it, which is, you know, why I haven't pushed harder to to vote for it earlier. Just want to make sure we have all that the information before we make any any decisions that will have an impact on on all our taxing entities.
So Steve, the majority of the money that goes through the Board of Mental Health, correct me if I'm wrong, goes to the providers that serve the residents for their needs?
The board's having to give us relations and distribute some money based on proposals that come in.
Okay.
So we're not just solely a throughput because we do grants ourselves, for example, the properties we have to improve or build. For example, TLC, the board owns that. So there's some things we do own. Operation typically is done by the agencies that we support. Ravenwood, Catholic Charities Relief, we do a little bit of McNamie. We even do a lot of things with Women's Safe, Family First, The Lost Team, and then we also put on a lot of training for groups with them. We work a lot with the jailhouse. We fund the, well, we fund Ravenwood to provide a therapist at the jail since about 30 of their inmates should either be in recovery or a mental home, but we don't have housing for that. So so there's a combination, but the majority of it is gateway to the agencies that we we support. That includes Giaga, Lake, or Lake Giaga Recovery Centers, which we team up with.
So where do the funds come? Like if you need a new roof or a new parking lot or things like that? Is that like from the levy money or, I mean, what's the process?
Punctual levy money. Comes from grants. We try to get grants so we can use the other monies to service the public. But there are a lot of things going on. We just put a new generator on the facility, on the mental health board facility, because we're part of the emergency management plan. Things happen in the county. We're able to house people there, or at least warming, crewing center. Depends what goes on in the county. So we're in a myriad of things. And also, the staff hasn't prepared, so the amount of the deduction would be pretty dramatic for us in our operation. And if it's, everyone gets cut, then I would suggest commissioners try to find an alternate route to address the property tax issue.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Hearing none, I make a motion to adjourn.
We don't, I think we have an executive session.
Sorry.
Commissioner DeWorx. I'll make a motion to move into executive session pursuant to ORC 121.22G1.
Second. Call for vote.
Mr. Spitala?
Aye.
Mr. Breckley? Aye.
We didn't have anything on board discussion, did we?
No.
Okay. Okay. I have you returning at 11:09. The new signs look good, by the way, Amy.
Oh, thank you, thank you. We have, I think, the last two major signs that are on Merritt and at Merritt and 44 and Ravenwood and 44 are going to be going in by the end of the week. So yeah, we're finally able to find our way.
Yeah.
So please let me know if you do see anything that looks...
Yeah, nobody could get here before, so...
I know.
You need those signs.
Yes, thank you.
Robenek from executive session and no action.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
All in paper?
Aye.
Aye.
We have some things to sign.